Okay, let's call the December 8, 2021, meeting of the Delray Oaks Planning Commission to order, and we'll start with roll call.
Commissioner Krieger?
Here.
Commissioner Ragsdale Cronin?
Here.
Commissioner Berger?
Here.
Commissioner Wood?
Here.
Commissioner Jack Shaw?
I was wondering when you were gonna get to me. Here.
Vice Chair Hayworth?
Here, present. Pledge allegiance. Everybody would like to stand or do whatever they're gonna do for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will now look at the consent agenda. Does anybody have comments, questions? No?
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it passes. Public comment. I don't see any public, but I'll read this anyway. Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda. Easy for me to say. They had the agenda at the time the matter is being considered by the commission. There will be a time limit of not more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken by the commission on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. And I see no public. So we'll move on. Reports. Well, the building report. Any questions, comments?
I have one for Karen. There's a couple of the ones at the top are highlighted in yellow. Is there a reason for that?
Um, let me see. Randy did this, so, and he's not on here tonight. Oh, it just means that they're extended. They've applied for an extension.
Okay, thank you.
I wondered about that, too.
So will it be the norm from now on, do you think?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Won't have to answer. Yeah.
I see we have two ADUs in progress, too.
We do. Yep.
Okay. And we don't have to approve the building activity report, so.
You just accept it.
Yep. So old business, there's none. New business, consider it report and provide input on a draft Delray Oaks Flag Display Policy to be submitted for consideration by the city council. I don't have my cheap, my notes here. I guess we'll go out to the commission for input. Mr. Ragsdale Cronin, you wanna start?
Yeah, so I met with George and John, I think it was last week, to discuss this, and I reached out after our discussions to John and suggested a compromise position. Looking back and talking with neighbors and friends, I think I overstepped where I was headed with that. I did kind of expect maybe a little more back and forth over it, not just a, here you go, thanks a lot, because George never commented on it. So I am not particularly thrilled with this one. I think flying the commemorative flags at Old City Hall, while it seems like a good idea, it's down in a hole where nobody's gonna see them. If we're gonna fly commemorative flags, they probably should be at City Hall. So, John, I think you did a great job with the policy. It does leave some wiggle room in there. You know, if we get a second flagpole and all that, I thank you for that. But I kind of, I think maybe I expected a little back and forth of me and George on this, but it didn't happen, so I'm gonna push to move the commemorative flags back to City Hall. So, that's my position right now.
Which, which part of the policy are you referring to? Can you give us the line?
Yeah, let's see. Where is it?
Is it the purpose 1A, it says they're gonna display them outside the Old Town Hall?
Yes.
Yeah, so Chair, as long as my fellow committee members are on board, I can share my screen, and I've highlighted sections that I think you all might be interested in in the policy, and we can go through the policy, and then maybe that'll help direct the discussion that we're gonna have.
Okay, that's great. Good. Thanks for doing that. Again, I don't know what to do with my meeting notes.
George, what I do? Yeah. And Commissioner Ragsdale's right, you know, that there could have been a lot more give and take and back and forth, but I think for the most part, we had consensus and we had a short timeline, so there's no requirement that you act on this tonight. If we don't get there, we can always move it to the next month, so, but it's good to have the discussion now. Oh. Karen, can you allow me to share the screen?
Um.
This is what we get for giving Randy the night off.
I think you can share your screen.
You have to make him the host.
Yeah, I think you have to make me the host.
Okay.
Okay.
You're the host.
Perfect. Okay, everyone can see that?
Yep.
Great. All right, so, so the first part, I just highlighted this part. So, so the policies usually start with a purpose, and then what the policy is, and then procedures, if you need any of those. So the part that I think might be interesting for everyone is, generally speaking, well, so first, just a little background, so when Bill and George and I met, I got some samples, three samples, for us to use as kind of a template to help formulate how we're gonna discuss this. We looked for, well, we got one from the city of Turlock, which was, we fly the city flag, we fly the state flag, we fly the federal flag, and then we only fly military flags and nothing else. So that was their policy, so that they had a very strict, clear policy of only flying those types of flags. Then Santa Clara, which was more in line with what we have here a little bit, but it's very short, very sweet, and didn't get into much detail, and then Arroyo Grande, which is closer to what we have here. Ours is just a little bit different, like Commissioner Ragsdale pointed out with limiting the flags to certain areas. So that's how we got to this point. So this part just kind of makes it clear that the the federal flag, state flag, city flag fly regularly, and then any commemorative flags can be authorized to fly, but they can only be authorized by the city council. So then in the policy, and I added something here that we actually didn't discuss, I don't think, I couldn't remember, but same thing, flag, you know, the three flags. I couldn't remember, commissioners, if we talked about the Tree City flag, that's one that we regularly fly up here. I know it is a source of pride of city staff, it's a source of pride of the community. We are Delray Oaks. So I know everybody, well, not everybody, but I think most people who pay attention are proud of the fact that we maintain our trees in the city, and that's a recognition of that. So we fly that fairly regularly at City Hall, so I left it in here. So that's a point of discussion, if you all think that that's good, or or if you wanna consider the Tree City flag to be a commemorative flag, and then we can get approval for the flying of that from the city council. The definition of commemorative flag is an expression of the city's official government speech that the city council may authorize the display of a commemorative flag. And we, this is what Commissioner Ragsdale was talking about. We talked about, for right now, limiting commemorative flags only to Old Town Hall, because the flag up here at City Hall is dated and short, and flying more than three flags on there sometimes, especially like right now, when the flags are at half staff, can become problematic. So we discussed the option of a second flagpole, if a second flagpole were installed, then we could fly commemorative flags up here. Or, we didn't include this, but I think an option is if we were to install a new flagpole that's taller and could accommodate more flags, then we could fly commemorative flags up here. But we do fly commemorative flags up here in the past, and so we can accommodate them. It was just, that was how that discussion went. So that's a good thing for us to focus on. Oh, this is to clarify that the city council will consider requests to fly commemorative flags only if that request comes from a city council member and is supported by a second city council member to bring that request forward. That just spontaneous request from the public and citizens won't be considered, so they need to get a city council member to sponsor that request. Putting a limit on it, that commemorative flags will be flown for a specific period of time that's directly related to whatever the period of time the commemoration is, whether it be a day or a week, but no more than 30 days. And then just defining the commemorative flag as anything that signifies a specific historical event, cause, nation, or group of people that the city council chooses to honor or commemorate consistent with the city's mission. And that flags for religious movements or creeds won't be flown to avoid the appearance that city government is endorsing a particular religious religion or religious movement. We won't fly flags of a particular political party, and no flags advocating an outcome in an election. And so really, those are the only things that I think might be controversial or lead to discussion, so with that, I'll turn it back to you, Chair, or maybe to George. I think George has some comments.
Sure, go ahead, George.
Yeah, I have several, and I apologize for not getting back in the conversation with Bill, but I thought we sort of settled on the Laguna Grande drawing system, and I was, it was compromised with me. I was I was at the other end of the extreme, where if you wanna fly anything you want, put it up at your house. It doesn't represent me, be it at City Hall or wherever, so Old Town Hall was a compromise, I felt, on my part. We could put up another pole, it's another cost to the city, and so that would be a third flagpole that would be flying, that we'd end up having to have somebody taking flags up and down and so forth, so that was sort of my comments with that, and like I said, I apologize for not being part of the conversation, but I thought we sort of settled on that Arroyo Grande way of doing it, so that was my comments.
We did settle on the Arroyo Grande, where the city council had to approve and stuff. Arroyo Grande didn't have a secondary flagpole at a different location for flying commemoratives. That's the only issue I've got, is if, if Old City Hall was up where everybody could see it driving by and stuff, I wouldn't have a bit of an issue with it, but it's down in, it's basically down in that hole, and nobody's really gonna go by and see it, unless you're going to the park for something. So the idea of a commemorative flag is to see it.
I was gonna say, the people are.
Well, I don't wanna call it a hole. It's down in a valley. How's that? Let's make it nice. In a valley. Or a canyon. Is it a valley or a canyon? I don't know what the difference between the two are, but you know what I'm saying? It's not up in front of City Hall on the major thoroughfare of the city. And that was something that, like I said, I talked to myself, I talked to my wife, I talked to my neighbors, and they all kind of went, what? Why'd you do that? So I kind of realized, maybe I stuck my foot in my mouth, so I just wanna bring it up for discussion and turn it over to the rest of you all to kind of mull over, and I'll be quiet for a while.
To equal that, balance that out, I talked to my neighbors, and they were sort of yeah, one or two of them said, like you're talking, but the majority felt that put up a flag whatever you want, and maybe I influenced them, I don't know, but I, I thought that was, you know, whatever. I just, a lot of things don't represent me, and I just didn't feel that the city should be spending, you know, time, effort, storing flags and so forth like that, so I'm still with the Laguna Grande system and with Old Town Hall.
Yeah, Gary? Gary?
Oh. I'm, I'm I'm with Bill on this. I think if we're going to fly commemorative flag, and it's been put forth by a city council member, second advice, like, to, so two city council members, it comes, it gets passed by a majority of the city council, can be ashamed to fly. We ought to fly it, and we'll fly where people see, and if it doesn't pass city council, then we don't fly it. And mean cities all over the place, now it's fairly common to show support for different different things, and if the city council supports it, then you can argue it's something that represents the city, and we shouldn't be afraid of it. I, but I think having it down at the Old Town Hall is a cop-out. I think we need to put it up in front of City Hall. I mean, maybe we don't need a second flagpole. I mean, the tree flag, I love it, and I'm proud of the fact that we are Tree City, but it doesn't necessarily need to fly 365, 24/7, and maybe we pull it down, and during the period of time, we're gonna fly a commemorative flag, and then put it back up, and it's, it's always up in between whatever commemorative flags we wanna fly, but I think if the city council, a majority of the city council, I like that, approves it, then, you know, we ought to fly it where people can see it, not tuck it away somewhere where, you know, like we're ashamed of it. If we're gonna fly it, let's fly it, and if we're not, let's not, but and like I say, we can consider the tree flag if we don't wanna put a second flagpole, which I totally understand. I don't know that we necessarily need a second flagpole. So I would throw that out there for discussion, but I definitely agree with Bill. I think if we're gonna put it down in Old Town Hall, that's, that's, to me, seems to be you know, kind of a, kind of a cop-out, and we're not worth doing, so.
Can I just add something to that? John, isn't there a line in here about replacing the tree flag with a commemorative flag or a flag of some other, some other flag?
It talks about it being possible, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so what you're, what you're proposing is something that could happen?
Yeah, I know, say, you were talking about the second flagpole, I'm thinking, we, we don't necessarily need to fund and maintain a second flagpole. We could just work out, maybe, I'm just throwing out there, something to consider is leave the tree flag up, but those periods of time when they won't, when the city council votes to fly commemorative flag, we could fly that instead of the tree flag, but then the rest of the time, the tree flag's flying, so it's at the most of the time.
Yeah, I agree. George?
I think one of the problems with that is, is that, you know, if we, we already have an MIA flag down at Old Town Hall, and I do think that should be flown all the time. There's a lot of people we need to respect and have a flag up. And if we put up a commemorative flag, and then some poor person gets shot, and we gotta put the American flag at half-mast, and three of them are gonna be laying on the ground. So we're definitely, however this goes, gonna need another flagpole to put commemorative flags or whatever on.
Well, I would say, George, I would just say that there's something you could put in there, is if it does go to half-mast, and it talks extensively about that, take the commemorative flag, because you're right, it's, I was up there for the pride flag raising, and it's, it's short. It absolutely is, so that certainly, we, it would not be unreasonable that maybe to just take the commemorative flag off if it goes to half-staff. That's right. I'm just trying to think of ways you can get aboard the second flagpole, try to save some money in maintenance.
Bill? You're muted.
Um, maybe drop the conversation about a second flagpole and just replace the one we got with the taller one, because it wouldn't require a whole lot of work. It's already got the foundation there. You could probably buy one. Flagpoles aren't extraordinarily expensive. I've seen them in the neighborhood of three grand. So we're not talking about, you know, we're gonna spend more money on the next, the election for foretag than we would on a flagpole. So I'm not seeing that being a limiting factor. But maybe, George, I see your point. We don't need three flagpoles. Maybe we only need two. We just get the little short one out of there and make it taller, get a taller one. Might be as simple as that. Yeah.
Mike?
Something else is with commemorative flags. I mean, I'm sure if we figured out, has anybody thought about how many commemorative flags we fly throughout the year as is, as we stand? I mean, if we, if we're flying eight to 10 flags throughout the year, whatever, whatever, you know, eight to 10 months, I mean, the Tree City flag is gonna come down quite often. And it does look bad when you have four flags on a pole, and it's at half-mast. I, I'm I'm not sure if a taller pole is adequate, or having, I'm almost a proponent for having two poles. Appearance-wise, it looks less, like you're less in solidarity as well. Appearance-wise, I think it looks nicer to have two poles.
Yeah, I think, through the chair, if I might, and Karen can correct me if I'm wrong, I think, generally speaking, including the tree flag, lately, it's been just three commemorative flags, the other two being the MIA, POW, and the pride flag.
Yep. If I may, John made a good recommendation, or not a recommendation, a statement, when we had the flag committee, that he walked around City Hall looking for the flagpole and expected it to be front and center of the City Hall, and then all of a sudden, he walked right by it, and oh, there it is on the side. So I, if push comes to shove, I would be more than willing to have a new flagpole put in front of City Hall with the three flags, and then make the existing shorter one a commemorative flag.
Denise, you've been silent.
Yeah, there's, well, you guys have some good banter back and forth. No, it all sounds good. I definitely agree that we shouldn't have it at Old Town Hall and not at City Hall. It has to be cohesive. I don't think anything needs to be at Old Town Hall, or we should have the normal flags that we have. One question I did have was, this is, okay, let's say the commemorative flags, we decide to do it, it goes through city council. Is that good for, until we say no, or every year it has to be, go through, re-up? So let's say the pride flag, once you say, okay, it's good, do you do it every year? Do we have to re-say okay for the next year?
Yeah, I, you know, that would have to be up to the city council, but I think, yeah, from a staff perspective, our recommendation would be that if it's something that's an annual thing, that the recommendation would be approve it once, and, and then we do it regularly, unless a subsequent council wants to bring it back for their consideration, then they can request that.
Okay.
They could.
I don't know if language needs to be put in there for that.
Uh, yeah, we could.
Um. I just wanted to look at my notes and see if I had anything.
It, it sounds like our short flagpole regardless needs to be replaced with a longer one as well, and where that placement might be, that I don't know if that's, you know, who decides?
Yeah, we've been, you know, the pandemic's been nice, because we've been able, as far as City Hall maintenance is is concerned, because we've been able to do a little sprucing up around here without so much activity coming in, so a new flagpole or a taller flagpole, those could be options for the council for for next year or future years' capital improvement project.
I think the only thing, the only thing I was blaring to me was the size of the flagpole we have now, because I see it, because it's right across the street here, and, you know, when we have it at half-staff, the bottom flag's just about touching the ground, so.
Yeah.
I think we do, I think we do need a taller pole regardless. And as far as the second pole's concerned, I, I don't really have an opinion. I don't really, you know, it's whatever force majeure here.
You know, my, I'd say, if everyone's saying we need a new pole, then I would say, keep doing having, just put a new one up out front, as they were talking about, and make it a nice tall one right out by the street, right in front of City Hall, and, you know, put our flag right up there.
And then let the, let the tree flag be taken down when we put some other commemorative flag up?
Well, it depends. That's a good point. I mean, maybe you can fly, certainly you can fly the tree flag, and another commemorative flag on the small one. Tree flag would never have to come down, so, I don't know. There's some, there's some options there, but if we, if we, it sounds like, you know, the new pole is whatever you wanna do, it sounds like it's maybe something we wanna look at, and we do that, and might as well just put it right out front instead of replacing the one we have.
Well, I'd like to, we could, we could do some comment after this, but I saw several thumbs up. And I'd like to make a motion that we install a new flagpole in front of City Hall that has the American flag, California flag, city flag on it, and leave the existing flagpole for commemorative that would have I don't know about the MIA flag, should be on that or the big one, and the tree flag and any other commemorative flags be put on the existing pole.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any, 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 what am I trying to say?
Opposition.
Yeah.
Karen, could we do a, could I do a roll call, though? I didn't catch everybody.
Yes, please.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Ragsdale Cronin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wood?
Aye.
Commissioner Krieger?
Aye.
Commissioner Berger?
Aye.
Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hayworth?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, so really quick, just so I can make sure we got this all right. We're not gonna have the, we're gonna classify Tree City flag as a commemorative flag, but that flies regularly. We'll get the council to approve that. And it'll fly regularly, unless another commemorative flag is being flown, that the council can make the decision once, and then that can be an annual ongoing thing unless subsequent council wants to change that.
Excuse me, John?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I, some, someone, please, but I think, well, maybe what we're talking about, at least what I was thinking, you were saying was if we get the second pole, like we just talked about, the fourth pole becomes the new commemorative flag, leave the tree flag up 365, there's two flags on there.
Yeah.
And then just add and take down the commemorative flag as, at the council votes, but I would have the council vote to approve the tree, definitely, just leave it up, and if you got, if that's the second pole, then leave it up, and it's always flying.
But do we end up in a situation where we fly flags at half-mast? Would the commemorative pole be flown at half-mast as well, and then we would have the same problem where the flags are nearly at the ground level or the lowest?
That's when you have three. Two of them, I think, fine.
Yeah. Also think, if you look into flag etiquette, when you do a half-mast with the American flag and the state flag, as long as your commemoratives aren't higher, you're okay. So theoretically, you should have one big flag for the American flag, California flag, city of Delray Oaks flag, and then the POW MIA has a list of rules that go with it of where you're supposed to fly it, when, where, and how, from the feds, I believe. I'm pretty sure it's a federal mandate. So my guess is, is off the top of my head, you'd have federal, state, city, POW MIA possibly on the main flagpole, and then your commemorative pole would have your Tree City and whatever the flag du jour is on. That might be what it is, would have to look into the rules, but POW MIA has a specific set of rules that you should, should or must fly it at certain times, places, locations. So.
Yeah, but as long as we only have two on that, on the existing pole, that comes our commemorative, I think that's fine, because it's that, it's that third flag that, that's the one that's draping.
And I don't think the commemoratives are as big as the state and federal flag either. I think they're smaller.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that also makes it a little easier to deal with.
Yeah, so what about on the smaller pole, leaving the, having a second federal flag, United States flag, and then any commemorative flags below that? So then it makes it clear that we're sticking with.
Yeah, I don't think, my, my opinion is we don't need to do that.
Yeah, I think if you, if you got the tree, I mean, you got the, the big pole with the flag and with the United States and the state flag and city flag, I don't think anyone's gonna get confused if they see the smaller pole commemoratives. I mean, I think, they'll understand what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay. City of Seaside has three, at least three poles, I believe.
I just, I just looked at it. It was like.
Eight of them.
They had like five or something like that.
They got a flock of them out there, and I think one of the one in the middle, I believe, is taller than the rest. There's one of them that's bigger that has the federal flag, the United States.
The one that I'm looking at here, I see six flagpoles in front of City Hall, and they, they appear to be the same height, American flag and the state flag on one, and then all of them have the American flag. And there's some flag I don't recognize, a couple of flags I don't recognize. It's almost like they have two commemorative poles with the, with them, with the federal flag flying on it. I don't really know if you guys can, can see, you probably can't.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So that, I mean, that, that doesn't mean there isn't another flag to the right or left.
The black one in the middle's POW MIA.
Okay, I'm sorry for not recognizing that. I don't have my, I don't have my reading glasses on. George, take it easy on me.
John, as you said, you know, nobody sees the flag, the, the existing flag pole other than Mike. So we don't need to put an American flag on that one.
So it doesn't remove confusion, Mike? Where are you?
Yeah, I guess. Case principle, right? Yes. But I do, I do think that, that, that a new flag up front would look nice. And would be something, you know, look good for the city. And then we freeze up that existing pole and we can. Use our commemorative flags there and, yeah, I think.
John, do you mind checking in to make sure that the proper etiquette is to? It, it's okay to have just commemorative flags on a pole by itself and doesn't have to have an American flag at the top?
Yeah, yeah, we'll look into that, but I think it's fine. Yeah, as long as we, as long as the to, the taller pole has the American flag on the top.
And, and the new pole needs to be taller.
Right. Yeah. And then, so I'll take what we've talked about here today and I'll craft the policy. That, that considers our current reality, which is one pole. So just to make sure everybody's okay with that, that's going to be. The three standard flags, the American flag, California flag and city flag. And then it can be the tree city flag or a commemorative flag. And just those four options. And then if we get a bigger pole, I'll wrap all that in not everything that we just discussed. Because we don't have a, a, a second pole and the council has to approve that.
Yeah.
And maybe at a later date, we can decide what goes on the flag pole down at Old Town Hall. That'd be a different subject.
Yeah, well, it sounded like the consensus was whatever we fly up here, we fly down there. If we fly a commemorative flag up here, we fly it down there. Did I get that wrong?
I don't, I don't think you need to fly the. Old Town. I think you. Yeah, I think that flying at Old Town now is pretty good. I mean, just.
So do you want to keep the MIA POW flag down there? Cause honestly, that's not supposed to be still up. That was supposed to be for Veterans Day and then come down. We just forgot.
Whatever the rules, whatever the rules are, Bill was, was, you know, talking about there might be guidance. Relation, I mean, we need to follow that, but.
Okay, so the, the only commemorative flag for down there is the MIA POW. I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I mean.
Cause the, 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 the six flag poles in front of Seaside's. City Hall, they always have the MIA POW on one of those poles year round.
I, I think we should maybe discussion, but. As we were mentioned in the hole, I don't think we ought to put the MI flag only down there, you know?
The canyon, I relented.
Right, no, no, no. And, and I think we would definitely, you know, want the council to weigh in on. On flying it up here as the commemorative flag. On the, on the regular days like veterans and Memorial Day and, and other days when we would normally fly it up here.
Well, Bill, Bill mentioned that we should probably look into what's the etiquette for that flag? And go from there.
Okay.
Bringing it forward from the, from the canyon. Definitely, I, I'd say. Well, honors the flag quite, quite a bit more than where it is now. I have not been down there in a while. Are we flying an American flag and the California flag there as well?
At the old hall or?
At the, yeah, it's a hall, it's in the hall.
Billy, you started something.
I guess I get hooked up on these things and I can't get rid of them. The canyon, the valley. All right, I'll call it the hall. I'm good.
Okay. All right, so.
I think we made some good progress. Thank you.
Have we, have we kind of beaten that dead horse? Are we, have we come to consensus?
Yes.
So, okay. All right.
Yeah.
All right, I guess move on to announcements by planning commissioners. Mr. Rex Del Cronin?
Um, I, I'm glad we were able to reach a consensus on this. It's moved it forward nicely. I was going to maybe approach the CAG and see if we could maybe do a little fundraiser and maybe we could. Get everybody to throw a fuck, a couple of bucks in a hat here and there. Maybe we could buy a flag pole. So. So maybe the city doesn't get stuck on it. You know, we could maybe do a little fundraiser or something like that and donate a flag pole to the city, or at least part of it. I've looked around, they're not, they're not extraordinarily expensive until you get to the really, really tall ones. And I don't think we need a really, really tall one. So. Matter of fact, would probably have to look and see how high we could actually go without interfering with things. So. That's about it for me. Thanks a lot. I appreciate the consensus. Good meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Crager?
Yeah, no, nothing, no real big announcements. I just. The, thanks to everyone who was involved with the Santa Society. I would. Have to say, I think it turned out to be really good. George is there and Denise helped out. I think. It was, it was a lot of fun, actually. I think it turned out to be a nice day. So. Just, I should talk to people, thank the people who were involved in it because it was, it was nice to get that back actually happening again. Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Yeah. Oh, so Parks Commission, we just, there is going to be, going to be a new play structure in the park. Coming up here soon. It was, it was approved by the Parks Commission. And also a couple of bocce courts and some benches. And a, a ADA pathway that is going to be going to the new play structure and also. That the little parking lot by the park is going to be repaved and restripped. So that is all up and coming soon, which is great news. Yeah. Thanks to, thanks to a grant. So.
That's cool.
And then the next, next, next thing that they're, the Parks Commission plans on tackling is the tennis courts. So they want to get those resurfaced pickleball tennis court combo striping and new everything. So, yeah.
That's good. That's good news.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Mr. Jack Shaw?
Uh, several things. One, I wanted to. Follow up with Gary that Santa's workshop was an outstanding success. It got put out on, on a website. That Marina said that we were having it. And so it was a bit of a shock. That we were really worried about half a Marina showing up and we didn't have enough stuff for the kids. But it all worked out very well. The Santa Claus at the last minute. Our first one. He had a scheduling problem and so for three days we were running around like chickens with our heads cut off trying to find another. Santa Claus and one was found and she did a great job. I wanted to say that.
Thanks for not calling me.
Yeah. Several people up where I live went to it and said it was great with little kids. So they were new people in the city and said it was just fantastic turnout. The next time we have a CAG meeting, I will see if we as a committee would be interested in donating towards the flag pole a little bit. And. Back to the parks. Pickleball. I think that's a great use rather than tennis courts. I don't know how much they're used, but. Pickleball seems to be the rage and we could probably get four of them and compare to two tennis courts.
Well, apparently you only have half of a tennis court for pickleball and it's going to be striped for both.
Yeah, you can just type it for both.
Yeah, so it's going to be a multi-use.
Hey, if y'all need a Santa Claus, maybe next year. Hopefully I won't have a, hopefully I won't have a conflict this time because I kind of look like one.
Yeah, well. No offense, but the guy that we had last year. It's, he is really Santa Claus. He's. Anyway, and my parting comment is, I hope I see everybody at our holiday party at. Up at the airport.
Woody's.
Woody's.
Mr. Berger?
I don't have anything to add other than I'm, I'm happy that we came to a really nice accord on the, on the, what we feel should be the flag ordinance that went really smoothly. And, and efficiently. So, yeah, that was, that was kind of fun to get that out of the way today. But other than that, happy holidays.
And for me, oh, Karen, go ahead.
I just want to remind everybody, if you're planning on going to the holiday party, just let me know. And I need your menu choices.
Did you get mine?
I did not.
You got mine.
You can call me or email me. But I do need them by Monday.
You got mine, Karen?
I did. Yeah. Thank you, George. Thanks, guys.
So for me, yeah, happy holidays to everybody. I look forward to seeing you guys next week at the dinner. It'd be, it'll be a lot of fun. And. Next meeting Wednesday, January 12th, 6:00 PM. Two thousand twenty-two.
I have one thing, Chair.
Go ahead, John. Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Just to let you guys know, I can't tell you who, but we did get two applications for the vacant planning commissioner. So if you want to know who they are and hear how the discussion goes, tune in next Tuesdays for the council discussion about that. But help is on the way.
Sounds good.
Kind of hoping that it's at least one of them is from the others. From Georgia's side of the canyon and Denise's side because we should just have a challenge when we have anything over here like on Portola. Mike and I and Gary have to recuse ourselves. So it's, it'd be nice to have something, somebody, someone to balance it out, I guess. So. What's that?
At least the other end of Portola.
Exactly, exactly.
Or the Oaks.
Or the Oaks, for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I like.
Refusals here are interesting.
I'd like to, if I could, I'm sorry, I already had my turn to speak, but. Think. Would you be a pro temp Chair Hayworth? Is that, is that what your temporary title is?
I don't know.
For stepping in and stepping up and. And doing a nice job for us on conducting the meetings. Hopefully, hopefully we can convince you to. You or, or I don't know who else, but to, to, to take over next year.
We'll see. Maybe. Anyway.
We'll take up a collection and buy him a case of wine.
White or red?
Maybe. I like that.
That'll be a New Year's resolution.
Anyway, all right. Well, thank you. I appreciate your confidence. Good night all. It's a fun meeting. Appreciate you all.
Good night.